And up first tonight, I will ask for a motion to approve our meeting agenda for this evening, as well as the work session and regular meeting minutes from August 26, and the work session and special meeting minutes from September 9, 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. And up first, you'll have to give, let me pause for just a moment. But we are, our first quality of action for tonight is for the oath of office for our student school board representatives. All right. All right, Amal, you're first here, okay? All right, I'd like to introduce Amal to our, as our school board rep. And we're going to start with our oath of office. It's an honor that you were selected to serve as liaison between South St. Paul School Board and the students of South St. Paul Schools, Special School District Number Six, as you recite the oath of office and assume responsibility in carrying out the duties and expectations of a student school board member. Furthermore, you will play an integral role in working together with the school board and the superintendent to continue to make South St. Paul Schools a safe, effective place to learn and grow for all students and staff. All right, ready?
Yes.
Awesome. All right. I hereby affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I hereby affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board member of South St. Paul Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Excellent. Welcome on board. All right, Jackson, come on down. All right, Jackson. Okay. It's an honor to welcome you as well, as you were selected as liaison between South St. Paul School Board and the South St. Paul Schools. Next, we have your oath of office. All right, so you'll repeat after me. I hereby affirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I hereby confirm my commitment to the oath of office.
I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board member of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
I swear that I will faithfully complete the duties of the office of student school board members of the South St. Paul Schools, Special School District Six, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Excellent. Welcome on. Jackson, you're going to sign now. Good job, guys. All right, now we have two pieces of quality of action tonight, and I'm going to invite Director Joel Miltier up to highlight new special education teacher pipeline grant in cohorts and the Grow Your Own program. Welcome, Joel.
And Candace.
Yeah, and Dr. Burkhard Candace coming up too. So while they're coming up, I'll just say, you know, these folks have taken on a lot to go above and beyond and write these extra grants. You know, we already had the one grant we brought last year, the Grow Your Own, and now we've got one within special education and very hard, high need area, hard to fill. And so just appreciate the creativity they've shown, but also the opportunity that that's creating for our own staff and even some of our students to grow and stay. You know, we love how people say, born here, raised here, work here, so this is, this is, it's right, right? Concur. So we're working on that from our end, too.
Excellent.
Great, thank you very much. Well, it's our pleasure to be here tonight to present the Grow Your Own and the Special Ed Teacher Pipeline Grant to the school board and tell you a little bit about what that is, how we got to where we are, our process for selecting recipients, and to share the names, at least, of some of the recipients with you this evening. So in November of 2022, the tri district worked collaboratively to apply for this very competitive grant funding and received the joyful news in early June that our district had been selected. The grant received at that time for the Grow Your Own program was $750,000 for the tri district. So the tri district splits that three ways for about $250,000 apiece for the teacher pipeline to start bringing teachers from our own ranks and from the community into the district. During the early stages of the grant funding, we sought input from school administrators, asking them for nominations of staff who they knew were interested in teaching profession and would be interested in this program. Ms. Amber Gay and Ms. Charmaine Coleman stepped forward to be our first South St. Paul staff to commit to pursuing the teaching degrees and becoming future South St. Paul teachers. I'm proud to report that Ms. Gay and Ms. Coleman have successfully completed their first year of this pathway to it.
You snuck in on me. Great, so why don't you tell them a little bit, if you will, about your experience and what that's been like so far?
Okay. Hi, I'm Amber Gay. So far, my experience of the Grow Your Own program has been positive. It's been a pleasure to help sort of iron out some of the kinks as we get this program off the ground, things that you probably never even noticed, but really going through things with a fine tooth comb. I took on more classes this semester, so I'm a little scattered right now. I'm taking a full 12 credits this semester just to sort of stay on track. But I love Metro. I think it's a great partnership. I'm glad that Ms. Charmaine is going to Metro as well. I have a lot of support from the School of Urban Education, which is where my degree and license will be through. Yeah, I'm not sure if I have much more to add than that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So yes, both Ms. Gay and Ms. Coleman have been very engaged with us in making sure that this gets on and started on the right foot. Ms. Coleman wishes she could be here tonight, but she's actually in class. So I told her that that was her priority and that's where she needed to be, but she wanted to send you her warmest wishes and wish she could have been here with you tonight. So congratulations, thank you for starting the program and helping us, and she's going to continue to be a partner for us, both Ms. Gay and Ms. Coleman will do that as we continue to build out and talk a little bit more about the program and the other recipients that we've suggested and go forward from there.
Amber, Amber.
Yeah.
How many years will this take you to complete?
Um, it's a 120 credit program. I transferred in '46 after my last semester, I think I'm around the halfway mark. So about two more years.
Two more years?
If I keep this pace.
All right. Yeah, good luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Awesome.
That's fantastic.
So that was the first start to the Grow Your Own program. And in 2023, the Minnesota Department of Education awarded South St. Paul Schools with another $230,000 for the special education pipeline grant. Under this grant is to develop a pipeline of trained licensed Tier Three or Tier Four special education teachers. The state is committed to partnering with grantees to remove financial and programmatic barriers for individuals seeking to become fully licensed special education teachers. Similar to the Grow Your Own programs, the SPED Pipeline Grant is a partnership between educator preparation programs and K-12 schools to recruit and prepare employees to become fully licensed T-Three, Tier Three and Tier Four teachers in special education. These programs provide tailored support, including stipends, scholarships, unique student teaching or field placement experiences, among other individualized programming to help candidates in pursuing a career in special education. The Special Ed Pipeline Grant will help find or fund the employees who have a commitment to teach students to obtain their special education license. The first priority is to fund employees who hold Minnesota Tier One or Tier Two teaching licenses, and the second priority, if funds are available, is to support other employees to become licensed special education teachers. And so I wanted to talk a little bit just about what the state's tiered structure is for teachers. And so you can see it on your screen there, there's four different tiers, Tier One, Tier Two, Tier Three and Tier Four. Tier One is the beginning and entry level. This is a one-year license. It's typically for teachers who have a bachelor's degree but have not yet been through a teacher preparation program. And so a lot of the times, we'll work with our ESPs or our parent educators in the district who already have bachelor's degrees and work with them to become teachers by getting their Tier One license. Again, we have to go through a renewal process every year if we want to renew that teacher to get a new license every year for that Tier One license, and they can have up to three renewals. Tier Two are individuals that have a bachelor's degree and one of the following, they're either enrolled in a teacher preparatory program, have a master's degree, or have completed a teacher preparation program. And again, this is two years for this particular degree that they hold before they have to renew it again, and they can renew it up to three times. Standard licenses that we typically see for most of our teachers that have been through a teacher preparation program are going to begin at Tier Three and go through Tier Four. And you can see there, there's several different stipulations that they have to meet in order to qualify for a Tier Three or Tier Four license. That's the ultimate goal for a teacher, is to get to that Tier Three, preferably the Tier Four license, because then you can see here the longer renewal periods down at the bottom, three years for the Tier Three and five-year renewal period once you have that Tier Four license. So that's the goal, is to get people into the program through these grants, start working through, they can either start now as a Tier One if they have a bachelor's degree already. Some of the programs allow you to have a bachelor's degree and be working towards a master's degree or even towards licensure in another area. So there's a lot of different pathways, even within the grant funding, that teachers can go through in order to either expand their current teaching license or get their first teaching license if they want to. So the state's been very flexible in those ways. Some of the goals of our program are to expand teacher candidate support through partnership with the tri district. So we were the first district out of the tri district to get candidates into the program. Ms. Gay and Ms. Coleman were the very first candidates in the entire tri district to jump in, get their feet wet and get right into education, and will most likely be the first to graduate as well. So now the tri district has come on board. West St. Paul and Amber Grove Heights are also putting candidates into the program starting this fall, and we have some new candidates that we'll talk about in a minute that are starting this fall and will also, some will start in January of 2025. Increased staff participation in the program, so we put together a stronger program this year and went through a much larger process to select candidates, which we'll talk about in just a minute. Established clear systems of teacher candidate support with expense management. So throughout both of these grants, there's a lot of different ways that we can help these staff out that are going through this program to get rid of a lot of those financial barriers that have been in their way previously. When the state first rolled this out, they rolled it out as a reimbursement program. Well, reimbursement does not remove barriers for folks that don't have the financial means to be able to go back to college. So we worked with our grant writers and with the state to say, is it possible for us to do a disbursement program instead? And we were able to get approval to move forward in that fashion, working with our finance teams in both districts to make sure that that's happening to where we can fund ahead of that or work with third-party agreements directly with the universities to be able to do billing directly so that our teachers are not getting billed here in the district and having to worry about that financial burden. So those are all, some of the administrative things that we'll talk about as well as, that we have to set up. And then create a system of teacher candidate feedback and continued growth and supportive teacher candidates. That's a process that we're still working on. We're trying to set up each teacher with a teacher mentor in the district, which is something that we already do for new teachers, but we're trying to do that as well for our teacher candidates, so that they have an actual teacher in South St. Paul that's working with them as they're going through this program to help guide them through the program, give them the supports, help them find the resources that they need, as well as we're going to look at expanding that out to having a larger cohort with a tri district, so there's a larger community of brand-new teachers that are going through this same experience together that can rely on each other as a resource back and forth. Scholarship grant funding, so total for the Grow Your Own and the Special Ed Pipeline Grant is a total of $480,000 for our district here in South St. Paul to be able to fund teachers going through this program, whether it be a one-year relicenter or new license or all the way up to a four-year complete degree for the first teaching degree. And then some of the grant administration that we're working on, that we have to do on our end to be able to help them be successful through this process, is establish contracts at participating colleges and universities, facilitate the connections with teacher candidates and representatives at schools, enter into third-party billing agreements, course of study review, just going through and making sure that their courses are aligning to the specific major that they're going after and they're working towards that teacher degree. Teacher candidate connection with teacher mentors, we talked a little bit about expense tracking, reimbursement and dispersments, transcript reviews, and then teacher candidate connections for ongoing support, just making sure that they have all the tools and resources they need to be successful. So we developed a new teacher select candidate selection process going into this next round as soon as we found out about that teacher grant, well, right after we did the Grow Your Own grant last year and Ms. Coleman and Ms. Gay began. We had an influx, when we last presented to you, we had an influx of interest in the program, as you can possibly imagine. So I think we had in the neighborhood of 10 people that had signed up and said, hey, pick me next time. I want to go through this, too. So we made sure that we emailed all of those folks and let them know that we were opening this back up again. There were additional money in the Grow Your Own grant fund, there's the new money from the Special Ed Grant Fund. So we wanted to make sure that we went through and we had a process, because when we have that many people that are interested, we needed to make sure that it was equitable for everyone. So some of the stages of that, we went through application review, we went through applicant interviews, and then we did a scholarship and grant award. Within each of those stages, we had different pieces that we followed. So in the application review, we did a review and scoring criteria, license desired versus the district needs, so really looking at where our needs are within the district, whether it be within special education or general education teaching positions, current highest level of education, professional communications, so how did the candidate communicate through their application process, what were their, what was their writing skills like, what was their communication overall? Tenure in the district, how long have they been with us so far? Are they brand-new to the district or had they been with us for a long time? Motivation for teaching was kind of one of the most important parts. What's driving them to want to come forward now and go through teaching and what's going to drive them to be able to complete a four-year program or two-year program or a one-year program? Work and attendance, what does that currently look like? How often are they coming to work? And are they, do they have a good attendance record? And then their references, who are they providing for references and what do those references look like? And of course, any transcript grade point average that they might have had prior to starting this program, if they had done some college before, what did that transcript look like? The interview itself was 30 minutes long in length. Applicants were assessed on a 15-minute presentation and 15 minutes of questions. The committee would debrief afterwards and then make the candidate selections from there. And then the award process, candidate receives email communication congratulating them on receiving the award. Meetings are scheduled by category of awards granted. Teacher candidate scholarship agreements were reviewed and answered, and then teacher candidates accepted or declined the scholarship award. And I'm happy to say that all candidates that applied to the program and went through and passed through that entire process, through all the rubric and everything that we had for scoring, every one of them received some sort of scholarship from the district to be able to go back to school and at least start their education, so.
All right. How about Dr. Burkhard take it from there?
I get to do the really fun part, announcing the scholarship grant awards for a cohort two, and this part really makes me excited because I think all of them are actually from the Student Services Department. So we'll go through each of them. So our first two on the slide are Michelle Wallace and Hannah Danielson. Michelle is a current special education teacher looking to get a special education license, so she's on that out-of-field placement and is part of that license right now. So she is excited to become a fully licensed Tier Four special educator for us. And then Hannah Danielson, so Hannah was a special education paraprofessional for us last year, and then has a bachelor's degree, had actually enrolled in a teaching program, and now the district is able to support her with continuing on in that program. So she's a teacher currently on a Tier Two license at Lincoln. And then Jody Jackla is also a current teacher of ours. She is going back to get an autism spectrum disorder license, which is a big area of need. We have very few autism licensed teachers, and so very excited for her to have that additional coursework and add that to her license. And then Vidmarie Pumarejo Torrens and Devin Mo are both special education assistants for us. Vidmarie is over in early childhood, and Devin is at our middle school. And Vidmarie is going to get her initial bachelor's degree in licensure, so she'll be in a four-year program, and then Devin is getting his master's degree in special education. And then Stephanie Oliva and Victoria Menzey. So Stephanie is a current, and Victoria are both current, special education assistants for us. Stephanie is getting her master, she's getting a master's degree both to be able to teach and be licensed, fully licensed for ELL students as well as in special education. And then Victoria is getting her four-year bachelor's degree to become a special teacher. And then I think the last person on the list is Heidi Terrace. Heidi is one of our birth-to-three teachers who is going at the moment to get a special education license, so she'll be getting a master's in early childhood that will come with that birth-to-three license.
Awesome.
I'm so excited.
Any questions for Joel and I about this process?
Are you getting another one?
Yeah.
Another one?
As a matter of fact.
Drum roll, please.
We might be coming to you, hopefully in several more months.
There is a third one that we are going to be potentially seeking, yes.
That would be for early childhood specifically.
It's a really incredible opportunity, and anything we can do to sort of promote education, like, which has been a career path that has been a little beaten up in, you know, the last couple of years, I think it's a really remarkable opportunity for our community and our staff. And very excited, very thankful for Amber to have gone through and helped sort this out for us, and clearly you have a really strong, well-developed system for the process to begin supporting those to expand licensure or gain licensure themselves.
It's very exciting.
It's really exciting.
Yeah, and it's truly been a collaborative effort across all the different departments in the district office, too. It touches finance, touches educational services, student services, human resources, so it's been wonderful to collaborate with all my colleagues.
It's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that goes into that, so.
Thank you for pursuing this opportunity.
I know, thank you for everything you're doing. I loved how it generated excitement, you know, in other, other people, like, pick me, pick me. I, I think that's, that's, that speaks volumes.
It's been a great recruitment tool for us, too.
Yeah, I bet, I bet.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you so much. Apologies for interrupting you with our excitement through that process, too. We just cut you right off, and so, thank you. All right. Up next, we have our stakeholder comments to the board submissions. We did not have any submissions through our website in this last month. We did have one staff member come to speak to the board at our last work session to express some of their concerns around student support, and those comments were received by the board and brought forth for consideration as well. If you wanted to make comment to the board, you could do that at our second meeting in the month, which is held at the district office at 6:30. At the first, thank you. At the second Monday, our first meeting of the month at 6:30 at our district office. Or you could do that through our forums on our website at any time. And next, I'm going to turn over to Vice Chair Ann Claflin for some highlights from our work sessions.
Yes. The minutes that are attached to the agenda very thoroughly document our work session from two weeks ago. And just to give everyone a brief overview, it's really all of the items that are coming before us tonight, many decisions about a purchasing threshold, we'll hear more about that from Brady later, certifying the levy and SRO, student, student resource officer, school resource officer contracts with our law enforcement partners. All of these pieces are coming forward tonight, and we just had time to discuss this as a board previously. And yeah, the Grow Your Own grants have been on the previous agenda as well. The excitement there is fantastic. I guess all my notes on the previous meetings.
It felt like a busy one as we sort of navigated our way through. Up next, I will turn over to Dr. Zambrino for some highlights from around the district.
Thank you, Chair Rash. Well, I mean, first off, what a fun start to the year we've had. It's just been overwhelmingly positive. I've been in all the sites multiple times, and there's just such joy. The first day was so fun to watch the kids come in and hug each other and then look for the staff they wanted to hug and hug the staff, and just the relationships are so evident everywhere. You know, we keep hearing from, I've talked to teachers all over the district, and it's been such a great start to the year, and every once in a while, we'll hear this button. I'm like, don't say but, we're just going to continue to work the plan, because I'll tell you what, they put in really good plans. Each one of our schools has a site solution team, and it works on kind of the, the day-to-day operations of the building, making sure that's working well. And then they also have building instructional leadership teams, and we've been doing some work with our BILTS around really digging deep into the data and knowing what the data's telling us, and it's really paying off. Well, actually, next month, we'll talk about it, but we are up, over the last three years, we're up in math, reading, science, graduation rates and consistent attendance, and the state is actually down in a number of those, and anywhere that the state is up, we're up more. We're not where we want to be, but we're closing that gap at a pretty great clip, so. And that's all due to the amazing teachers and support staff in our buildings who are just doing that, delivering on a, on a daily basis, so just want to say thank you. And actually, I shared with the, with the board at our work session, I walked into the secondary today a little before noon, and it was just between lunches, I guess, and it was so quiet, I had to like, ask, like, do we have a staff development day here today, or like, what's going on? And it just feels so good. So I know they've, they've done some things, like at the, I know Principal Borg put the Yonder pouchers in a couple of years ago, which really helped get the kids kind of separated from the cell phones. Now the high school is tightened up on the cell phones and attendance, and no surprise at all, I always say, our kids are the best, and they're just stepping right up to the expectations they've been given. So really fun to see the, the fruits of the hard labor in terms of how we're measured by the state and just how things feel. So excited, so appreciative of the work everyone's doing, but we have a lot going on, and this is a very busy week as we've got, so we'll try to cover some of the things we have going on. Very important, we have the board election coming up this fall. I know there's other elections that seem to make the new cycle, but this one's really big to us, so very appreciative that we had six candidates jump in and, and express an interest. Those of you sitting here know what a heavy lift it is to be on the board and, and the complexity of the work, so excited to, to see how that goes. We have, you know, we'll have a new board in some fashion come January, so excited to work there. We do have information on our website, so you can go right to our website, click on the election link and find out more information about each of our candidates. Each one was sent a questionnaire to fill out information, and then also the League of Women Voters is hosting a forum for them, as they usually do, and that'll air on Town Square Television and on social media. So again, if you want to go to our website, all the profiles that we have are there, and you can read about our candidates, and thank you to the candidates who were jumping in. Also this week, we're kicking off a process for our strategic plan, so really going to be fun and excited about this. One of my goals since coming here is to really, and we've talked about it a number of times with the board, elevate stakeholder voice. You know, we've started with a desired daily experience for staff, students and families. We've done the core values work with our city council and UALL, which has been very powerful. We've had lots of different task forces weighing in on our Packer pathways, which is our pathways we're developing through our high school. The kids are very excited about that, we're seeing really great enrollment in those courses. So lots of good things coming from that stakeholder engagement. And just coming off of the pandemic, the transition in leadership, we couldn't quite get to this point right away, so very excited to, to launch on our strategic plan refresh. So revisit our mission, vision, and then what I like, we're working with student education, it's going to be very pragmatic, practical, like front and back. This is not going to be a 70-page document that none of us know what it says. It's going to be really easy to say, this is who we are and this is where we want to go in the next five years. And the math kind of works out great, because it'll be 25 when we roll this out, so we'll have a 25 to 2030, nice break in the calendar for that. But we did send out invitations and hope our families and staff saw that we do have a, a high rate signed up, so we're excited about that. We'll be starting our, our task forces, I'm sorry, our stakeholder engagement with the listening sessions coming up, our focus group listening session starting tomorrow. And then we'll have a steering committee that's compiled of staff and families and community to help kind of take everything we learned to find out what's working well, where do we want to improve, where do we want to go in the next five years. So excited to engage everyone in that process. I really appreciate everyone who signed up for those. I know everyone's busy, but it's, it's going to be really fun and really powerful thing to do. As always, you can find information on our, on our email at the communicator, on our website at the communications link, so hop in there or send them an email. We've had some talk in the community about Amaze Works. We have a new curriculum coming out at our elementary to support students in helping us create conditions for equity inclusion in our schools. So there's been a lot of talk, but one of the things we want to do is make sure people have good information, because if you're going to act, we want to make sure you're acting on good information. And so I really commend Principal Marty at Lincoln and, and Mr. Bretoy at Capoja for, they've been welcoming in families who have questions or concerns, like, come on in, see the curriculum, see the books. But we did want to make sure we offered a little bit more in-depth opportunities, so at each one of the sites, on the 24th at 5:30 at Lincoln, and then same time on the 30th at Capoja, we'll have the materials, we'll have a model lesson, so families can see what the lesson entails and hear how the teacher would present that, and then they can review any of the materials. The books are actually quite good. I think when people see them, they'll be really impressed by the messages that are contained within those books as we work to create a really inclusive environment, and I know our kids will do great with it as well. But as required by law, we can always make curriculum available, and if a family says, you know, I like all of this except for this one piece, they can opt out. I actually had a parent ask me and Mrs. Marty the other day, well, what would that look like if my student didn't do that one lesson? It's like, oh, no big deal, they can just go over to the morning meeting in the room next door. It's like, well, won't they be singled out? And it was interesting, because we were kind of like thinking about what it looks like. If you're in our classrooms, we have people getting pulled out for EL services, special ed services, groups, all kinds of different things. So the kids don't notice, if anything, they're going to say, can I go with? So there's no stigma or shame in, in anyone saying, you know what, we're going to sit out that lesson. So just again, I want to make sure people have good information, we'll support your choice, but we want to support your choice based on, you know, well-informed decision-making. So please attend those if you're wanting to learn more. Our Educational Foundation, what amazing partners they are, and I couldn't believe it, it's the 37th Annual Walkathon coming up here. So that'll be on the 25th this week, from 4:30 to 6:00 at Capoja. We're doing in every other year now between, so is that Lincoln last year, Capoja this year. So we're kind of having that equity piece across and not trying to double every year. And then rather than going through the streets, they're just going to go around the block, around the school, and keep it safe. But last year, we had an amazing DJ, actually Roosevelt used to work with me, and he's an amazing guy. I don't know if they got Rosie for this year, but really fun. And the, the Duffy's were grilling up the hot dogs, and all of us were handing out food and cheering the kids on. So it looks like the weather's going to be pretty decent, not hot, not cold, so I don't know if we could ask for better than that. But again, thank you to the Educational Foundation for what you've done for us. I mean, almost a half a million dollars in scholarships. What's neat about this one is the kids who do the fundraising, half of the money goes right to their classrooms. They get a little ownership and, you know, they know they're helping out their classroom, and the other half goes to the foundation, which will help many of our scholars. So excited about that. Fill the Backpack. I think this is the best deal in town. So tomorrow, from 4:30 to 7:00 at the Croatian Hall, is the taco feed for the Fill the Backpack campaign. So that's hosted by the Mitzvah Lodge, number 191. And Deb Griffith does a ton to help support that at the city. The members of the mayor's youth task force will be there, and they're focused on sustainability, so everything's recyclable, and you'll see. But you can get one of those giant tacos for $3, or two for $5. I'm like, you could get four of them for $10 and feed a family of five. I swear, they're like so big. But really appreciate the support for our students and making sure they have what they need. Nothing would be worse than a kid coming to school and thinking they don't have what they need to succeed for their day. So very appreciative of that partnership. I'll be there to stuff my face with one of those big tacos, so hopefully I'll see people there. Lots of things going on, lots of Packer pride and action as we're, as we're moving through these opening weeks. I can't believe that it's as far into the school year as it is already, but we've done a lot of fun things so far. As I said, we welcome back our students, and they are just doing an amazing job. But I, I always say, on the worst day, we have the best kids. Our kids are so good, but our staff as well. Like, they're, we're so well-prepared for the kids, and, and I think, again, that's why we've had such a great start to the year. So very excited about that. But we like to build excitement right from the start. So this year, really fun, back to our foundation helping us. And I'm looking over at Lisa, Lisa and Danette helped with some of the design pieces on those shirts, but you can see that, it's kind of hard to read, but it says Little South St. Paul Packer, and all the kinders got that this year, and they were able to all wear them together and take pictures. And I got to see them at the schools, like, just beaming with pride as they're now the Packers. And so, you know, they say, once a Packer, always a Packer, so let's start them young. We actually have onesies for babies that are born. I've shown that in the past, so we really take it seriously, like, once a Packer, always a Packer, let's get them early and often. So really fun, and then again, thank you to the foundation for support of that. This month is Hispanic Heritage Month, and we do have a large Hispanic or Latino population in our school district, and so it would be important no matter what, because I think everybody benefits from learning the rich history of the diverse heritage that we have in, in our state and in our country. But super fun to celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens who come from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central and South America. And you can see some of the work the kids are doing, so putting together displays to elevate that work, having some really fun events. I got to join this parade. And so our students in our CDLU, our Comunidad de Latinos Unidos affinity group, paraded through both elementary buildings, so they went to both. I mean, the kids were beaming, like, every kid was screaming and having so much fun. But as you sat there and you looked at our Hispanic or Latino students, just seeing like the flags and the clothes and the, the role models that they have above them. And our CDLU kids have some amazing leaders, I'm telling you, like phenomenal leadership. They planned events last year. What was the second one where they had the whole gym full of?
Cinco de Mayo.
That was the Cinco de Mayo, because we've done Dia de los Muertos has come on since I've started, and that, that one, they had vendors from all over. It was incredible. I'm like, I can buy a gift for Karina while I'm here. Brought home some flowers and this beautiful vase that's stoneware and kept it. So that's, they planned all of that kind of stuff. I think they got some staff versus students soccer coming up here pretty quick. But again, the best thing was just seeing the pride that they have. And, you know, sometimes, like, I've been on this journey a long time, this is my 26th year in education, and one thing I hear people say is they're kind of sometimes even critical events like this, it's not enough, and it's not enough. But I think sometimes they miss it, like, the pride is so strong. You know, we could do more, we need to do better. One month is never enough for any whole group of people. But to see the pride our kids have when they're leading events and they're being role models and mentors for our kids, it just gives you goosebumps. So, and I appreciate, you know, like Daisy and Bridget were there working with them to get them moving. So I know that's a lot of work. It seems like these things maybe aren't that much. It's a lot of work to organize a group of kids and get them in buses and to the school. So thank you to them for, for doing that as well. We have some new staff at ECFE, which is great. So we, we were saying to Amal and Jackson, you weren't here yet because you were doing football, but we were saying, we have a lot of acronyms, so you guys as student reps need to say, hey, timeout, what are all these letters you're throwing at us, right? So that's Early Childhood Family Education Teachers. So at our Early Learning Center, we have two new staffs. So Iman Whitaker Smith does the parent education portion, and Michaela Griffin is the Early Childhood Teacher. And just watching them and the relationships they're building, you can just see from their picture how warm and welcoming they are. And so we're just getting started with those classes. If you have a child birth to five, please sign up. Like, again, we love starting early, we talk about birth to earth, we take great pride in serving our families and community right from the start and right to the finish. So excited about that. And then they do some fun events, like they have a, a community baby shower coming up at the Family Education Center. So on October 11th at 9:30, there, anyone expecting family or a baby under one-year-old, and of course grandparents are welcome, to please come and, and join and learn about our programming, receive a free gift bag and resources. There might be a little Packer onesie in one of those, you'll never know until you show up. But again, meeting the staff and just knowing, like, I hear a lot of people say, even when their kids are teenagers, I learned this when I was in the ECFE class as a parent, and it's something it carried with me all the way through. So I really want to encourage any of our families to participate in that. All right, middle school scientists, fun to see their, the hands-on and inquiry-based learning. I saw it at the high school as well, like, just jumping right in and getting our kids to be really good inquiry-based learners. So our, our sixth graders are doing experiments. I remember doing this one, how many drops of water can fit on a penny? And I'm sorry, I don't know the answer, because that's like driving me nuts right now, so I can't wait to go ask the, the kids and teachers how many that was. And then I did see the teacher walking in with the, the fish to, for the lab where they're observing them, like, how do they respond to different stimuli? So making a hypothesis, what might they do, and then getting a chance to test that. So really fun to see the science happening there. High school physics is around that theme of science. Mr. Sanslow is very creative about things he does with the kids, so they had a hands-on learning experience to calculate speed. So they're dropping weights from the second-story balcony and timing how long it takes to fall, and then learning how, like, some of that don't like go, and then you hit a timer, like, how that human element actually can distort your data, so really important lesson there. I heard from Mr. Ochaki that he was showing them how hard it is to break a window by putting a piece of glass down, and they were dropping weights until they finally got it big enough to smash the weight. I did not get to see that one, but kind of thinking a little bit out of the box with these guys. So good job, Mr. Sanslow on that. Oh, all right, just about there. So dates to remember, September 25th. As I said, we got the Walkathon, should be a great event. Homecoming week right around the corner, the 7th to 11th. And then, hard to believe, we're talking about MEA already, it's not that far away. October 16th to 18th, we'll be on the break for the teachers' convention. September 24th and 30th at 5:30, I mentioned the Amaze Works, so Lincoln on the 24th and Capoja on the 30th. And then elementary conferences coming up right there, the 30th, 31st. And then secondary on October 10th, it has their conferences coming. So we are just rolling along here. Again, fantastic start to the year, shout out to our kids, all of our staff. It's been fun. It's been a really fun start.
That is a whirlwind of activities.
Yes, I know. Thanks for letting me, you know, indulging me there.
Yeah, no, as we come off the summer, it's exciting to see this work starting to go into action as well.
Absolutely.
All right. Up next, we have our consent agenda, which are items that are financial claims, staffing, and personnel in nature, have been presented as a part of the board packet. And I am looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on our consent agenda items? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Now, I don't have any policy items for review for you tonight, that is coming, but buckle up, I've got, I think, only about 1,000 business items for us to make it through tonight. So we've got a whole bunch in, in store for us. First, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the non-exclusive dance cooperative sponsorship with St. Paul Conservatory for the Performing Arts. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I may turn over to Brady Krueger.
So Minnesota State High School League has a, part of their bylaws, bylaw 403, for a non-exclusive cooperative agreement, which allows students that attend charter schools but don't offer Minnesota State High School League-sponsored activities to return to their resident district to participate in a Minnesota State High School League activity. So we do have a student that is seeking to do that. We have filed the application with the State High School League and are seeking board approval for that to take place.
Excellent. Any questions or discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Stick around, Brady.
I will.
Because up next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the boys' hockey cooperative agreement between South St. Paul Public Schools and New Life Academy, beginning with the 24-25 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, back to you, Brady.
So South St. Paul and New Life Academy are seeking approval to form a cooperative partnership in boys' hockey that will compete in the Metro East Conference as well as Section 4A. Both schools have been in conversations with each other, and it's a really good fit for us. On the South St. Paul side, we know that our youth hockey numbers are declining, and we're looking for something to solidify that so we can continue to offer Packer hockey. So under this cooperative agreement, we would essentially be absorbing New Life Academy. We would maintain the Packer name, the Packer logo, and so on, which is incredibly important for our Packer families.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any questions or discussion? Does that agreement change anything in terms of what conference we're in, or any, have any impact in relation to that?
No, because of, we've already gotten approval from our Metro East Conference, and we have, because of the numbers, we would not bump up in a class or bump up in a section. Sections get realigned every two years, so we could be moved, we could have been moved regardless of whether we entered into this co-op or not. But we will largely maintain, stay in Class A, stay within our conference, and so on.
Excellent, okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Brady.
All right.
Up next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Special Education Pipeline Grants Tuition Reimbursement Agreements with Heidi Terrace, Michael Wallace, Hannah Danielson, Jody.
Michelle Wallace.
Oh, Jakula.
Jakula.
Jakula?
Jakula.
Jakula, thank you, Devin Mo and Victoria Menze. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, I'm going to turn that back over to you.
Great, thank you. So previously, we've reported to the school board that the tri-district had secured a grant for a Teacher Grow Your Own program. This grant is ongoing, and we have also secured a similar grant for teachers in the field of special education called the Special Education Pipeline Grant, all presented earlier this evening. We've had a great deal of interest from staff since our board presentation in January of 2024 regarding our two staff members entering the first Grow Your Own program. We developed a formal application and interview process to select recipients for those scholarship and grant awards. Tonight, we are pleased to announce that eight additional staff will be receiving scholarship grant awards to begin their teacher preparation and/or continue their growth as a teacher and expand their license areas. Four of our current eight recipients are beginning their schooling this fall, and the other four will begin spring of 2025. We have a few of our teacher candidates that, one of which came tonight to share a little about what the scholarships mean to them. And tonight, we're bringing forward the agreement between the district and the staff members, which define the terms and conditions of their participation in these programs. Looking for board support for those agreements.
Excellent. And I apologize, I misspoke. Michelle is a part of that as well. Any other discussion?
Just general enthusiasm.
Clearly, as a part of quality of inaction, this is something that is enthusiastically supported by the board and very, very excited about.
Yes.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Now, I'm assuming, Joel, you would say the same things about the next. So next, I am looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the Grow Your Own Grant Tuition Reimbursement Agreements with Vid Marie, Pamero Torrance, and Stephanie Olivia for similar things. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I'm sure that is pretty much similar sentiment about these, this remarkable program that we're building into our district. Any further discussion or comments from the board?
Still enthused.
Still enthused. We're still there.
Very proud of these events.
Yes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, enthusiastically, the motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution authorizing employment of Board Member Wendy Felton as substitute in a classified position in the school district. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I'll turn this over to Joel Miltier.
According to Minnesota Statute 123B.195, school board members may be employed by the school district as an employee as long as the amount earned does not exceed $20,000 in a fiscal year. Additionally, employment must receive majority approval at a meeting in which all board members are present. The board members on this resolution have been substitutes in the past and would like to continue as substitutes for the 24-25 school year. Majority approval by the school board is necessary.
Okay.
I have the same, I have the same question.
We're going to have to pull these items from the agenda because we don't have a full.
Quorum to be able to, to be able to do that.
So we can just table them, that would be great, if we can have a motion to table each one of those next items and bring them back at the next board meeting.
So, so tabled?
Are you making a motion to table?
I would motion to table. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye. If Tim does become present, we may shift some things around and call you up for us to be able to do a roll call vote and bring those back. So that advances us quickly through our business items.[1608.02] us quickly through our business items. So next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the September 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2026 agreement for...
Cher Rash? I'm sorry. Can we do a motion to table each one of those items?
Oh.
Sorry.
Absolutely. All right.
Thank you.
So, the first motion, to clarify, was to table the resolution for the authorizing the employment for Board Member Wendy Felton as a substitute in the classified position for the school district. Have this sent past? Next.
I will, I will motion to table the resolution for Tim Felton.
Second.
All in favor?
Wait a minute.
Sorry, we're on...
Kim this time, yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Clearly, we are out and doing things a little out of order as we're trying to catch up.
I would move to table the motion for Tim Felton.
Second.
Who is the second? Thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. All right. Do we got all of our i's dotted, t's crossed? Excellent. Okay.
Work.
Thank you, Lisa.
AKA Lisa.
Okay. Next, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the September 1st, 2024 to June 30th, 2026 agreement for school board, or school resource officer services between Special School District Number 6 and the City of South St. Paul. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved?
Second.
Second. And for discussion, I'd like to turn over to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah, thank you. So, we continue to have a very positive working relationship with our local law enforcement agency here in South St. Paul. Obviously, we know the SRO thing went into the spotlight last year. Just really want to thank Chief Wiki and our SROs for helping us navigate that and keeping our schools safe and keeping kind of other people's noise where they want their noise and where we don't want any noise. And so, it's been a great partnership. We've had, in the past, we've had two and then it went down to one. We're back still at two. So, the proposal is to continue with two SROs next year and then sharing that cost between the school district and the police department. And we still come in with a really good rate compared to other districts. So, for example, they come and work different events and things like that and don't actually charge us for some of those things that happen in other spaces. So, I really appreciate the, that partnership to keep our costs low, yet making sure that our staff and students feel safe. But even more, it's the relationships. We, I know we had some conversation about that earlier, but that's the other piece. We're not looking to police our students in our schools at all. We're looking for our students to build positive relationships with law enforcement so that they know that's a trusted person they can go to, you know, in our schools or out in the community. It's also a great resource for families because if they're trying to navigate a difficult situation, it's much more comfortable to be able to talk to the SRO probably than calling a, you know, an officer just to pull up in a squad car and answer your question. So, it's benefited us in a lot of ways. So, hopefully, we can continue to keep this partnership moving.
Yeah, absolutely. Student school board reps, what is your guys' relationship or thoughts around the SROs? What, how do you see that playing out inside our schools?
Um, I mean, I'm neighbors with Officer Cavalier. So, I already know her, but she's very sweet and just meeting all the, meeting all of the SROs, like we see them at football games and they walk around the halls, very nice to students. And if there's a serious issue to come across, they handle it. So...
Love that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah. Jackson, do you have any?
Uh, yeah, they, they do a good job in the schools and I think they help students feel safe and protected.
That's good.
Let's him focus on running that ball hard at those football games and not have to worry about all the nonsense happening around, right?
Yep.
Excellent. Well, thank you. All right. Any other discussion or comment from the board? I just want to express my gratitude for the city. That has been a great partnership through the entire time that I've had the privilege to serve on the board. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Thank you. All right. Next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the resolution for increasing the federal micro purchase threshold from 10,000 to 25,000 to be consistent with Minnesota State Statute 471 dot 345 subdivision 5 as allowed by 2 CFR 200 dot 320 A14 for the acquisition of property or services under a federal award. All in favor, please say aye.
I'm going to say so moved.
Oh, wait. No, that's a, that's a resolution. I've already messed that part up. Do I have a motion?
Cher Rash, she was like Brady to...
Well, first, I need a motion.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Brady, you want to unpack that mouthful that I just threw out there?
Sure. So, we have purchasing requirements that we need to follow for, under Minnesota State statutes. And then, under the federal uniform grant guidance, there's also a different threshold we need to follow in making purchases. So, it depends on which funding source we're using. So, if we're using federal funds to purchase something, there's a micro purchase threshold. If we're using state funds, there's the quotes, the threshold that we need to get quotes. So, those thresholds are different. State statute says anything over 25,000, we need to go up for multiple quotes. This micro purchase threshold with federal funds is only 10,000. So, we have to be thinking about which bucket of money are we using to know which rules we need to follow. Within the uniform grant guidance, it does give the school board the authority to raise that threshold up to $50,000 for that micro purchase. So, all we're proposing here is that we raise it up to match state statute. So, our processes can be consistent and whether it's state or federal funds, we're still using the $25,000 threshold to get those multiple quotes. So, that's just to try and align and streamline federal requirements with state requirements within the purchasing processes.
You did a much better job than mine, just the introduction of that in general. This is an item that was also unpacked during our last work session and gone through the Finance Committee. So, any other discussion or questions?
I'm all in favor of creating efficiencies, knowing which rules you have to follow for which bucket of money and in what year and what how, what where, when. As we all know, Brady does an excellent job of keeping track of which of the three, four, or five years in any point in time we may be dealing with. And so, if we can do this one thing to help streamline things, I think we should.
Excellent. Lisa, will you please call the roll on this vote?
Uh, W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Berdi?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
And Cher Rash?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
And motion carries. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the 2024 payable 2025 proposed levy. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And discussion, we return to Brady Hoffman.
All right. So, we're at that point in the year where all school boards in the state have to certify their proposed levy by the end of September to the Department of Education and to their counties in order to generate the tax statements for the fall. There's a process to go through where you can certify a specific dollar amount or a maximum. The recommendation is to certify the maximum because MDE is still running calculations and still updating these levy amounts. So, the numbers that are out there today may shift slightly as they're making those changes. So, by certifying the max, it allows us to capture any additional tax revenue at, by, through MDE correcting those formulas and those calculations. So, the recommendation is to certify the proposed levy at the max and then we could submit this over the county auditor. We would come back then in December. So, December 9th would be the truth and taxation hearing. So, that is when we would come back. And in the truth and taxation hearing, we talk about our current year budget. We talk about the proposed tax levies and the changes within that. And then, we also give the opportunity for public comment. So, those are the requirements of the truth and taxation hearing. So, that would be in December 9th. And so, following the truth and taxation hearing is then when the school board would certify the final taxes, which would incorporate any of those potential changes. And then, that's what would actually end up being paid on the 2025 taxes by our community. So, it's a standard process. We did walk through this at the work session earlier this evening. But this is a recurring thing that happens year over year and it's just part of the levy process. So, yeah, so the recommendation is to certify at the max and then come back in December and go through the truth and taxation at that time.
Perfect. Any questions or discussion? Also, a process that we've been working through, through our work sessions and Finance Committee as well. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Up next, we are looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the acceptance of gift resolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And for discussion, I return to you again, Brady.
All right. We have two donations tonight. One of them is a cash donation from the Croatian Hall for the softball program. And then, we also have a donation from the South St. Paul Youth Baseball of a synthetic pitching mound for the north fields, north baseball field at the high school.
Excellent. And with great appreciation, as always, for those who can support our community and activities. Any further discussion? Okay, Lisa, will you please call the roll?
Director Weber?
Yes.
W. Felton?
Yes.
Claflin?
Yes.
Lala Berdi?
Yes.
Human?
Yes.
And Cher Rash?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
A motion passes. Or carries. Thank you so much. Last business item for the night, looking for approval for the South St. Paul School Board to approve the community representative on the teacher relicensure committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
For discussion, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Zambrino.
Yeah, you know, I was thinking back to that graphic we saw with all the different tiers of licenses and things and thinking, wow, that's gotten very complicated. So, appreciative of our reps on that committee to make sure what their job is, as teachers are required to log hours each year, a cumulative number of 25 hours per year, plus specific areas to renew their licensure area. And so, this committee goes through and makes sure the teachers have met the various areas so they can report that to Pelsby, which is our state licensing board. But we are required to have the board approve one community representative and we're excited that Beth Johnson, retired teacher from our secondary building, is interested in taking on that role. So, hoping we can have one of our retirees continue to support our teachers in that way.
Appreciate that. It's, it's one of those sort of invisible components of education that we don't even see our teachers do and working on. And there are a lot of hoops you jump through and you got to make sure you've logged your hours in the correct category. And appreciate Beth stepping in and volunteering to help out with that process because sometimes, even if you've done it before, a little guidance is really appreciated in that process.
Very complicated.
All right. Any further discussion? All right. Lisa, will you call a roll call vote?
Uh, this is just a regular...
Oh, jeez. The one time. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
It's been a long night.
All right. Motion carries. With great deal of excitement, we move away from our business items and welcome our school board reps for their first report to the board. So, I turn this over to Amal and Jackson.
Yes, so today's going to be kind of a light one because we just got started.
Good, because I really messed up so many things just now, so.
Yeah, it's all right. But I just wanted...
Way to support him.
Yeah, see? Need to represent.
It's all right. But I really wanted to highlight on our cell phone policy update, especially in the secondary, we have seen immense progress with education. Like, in my classes, while people may complain, well, not using their phone, everyone is engaged, everyone's talking to each other, it's less isolated, and everyone's having a better time at school. And with our detention policies that are attached to the cell phone policy, people are actually taking it seriously and they're coming to win Wednesdays too. So, it's been a plus.
Yeah. Coming up for homecoming, it'll be the second week of October, I believe.
And there will be a backyards game on Wednesday or Thursday. And that'll be run by all the athletics teams, fall sports. The homecoming football game will be on Friday at 7:00. And there will be a Hall of Fame ceremony right before that on Friday. So, yeah, and the theme will be all of the past homecomings. So, there will be pictures of past homecomings on the walls. And the colors are going to be maroon, white, and gold. Yeah.
Very cool.
Awesome.
And then, other mention relating to football, we have our Battle for the Bars this Friday, South St. Paul versus Simley at TCO Stadium. I hope all of you can make it. I'll be there and I'm not really a fan of sports.
What about Win Wednesday? Did we, was there nothing for that?
Students coming to Win Wednesday?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, sorry about that. I kind of tied it in with the cell phone policy. So, students are showing up because of our detention policy. So, it's been a great thing.
And, and it also changed just every other week instead of every week.
Yes. Yeah, now it's not every...
The detention policy, is that new?
Yeah. So, there's a new detention policy relating to cell phone usage and attendance. This attendance policy is, I think it's pretty strict, but it's good. Like, we needed it. If you have three tardies in a single class, you have detention with that class. If you miss a day of school and it's, and it's an unexcused absence, you have to serve detention. So, people have been coming to school. Great.
Lot more hustle and the muscle this year, isn't there?
Yeah.
And Jackson, you said something about being every other week. What were you referring to?
Yeah. So, last year and all the years we've had Win Wednesday, it was always every week was Win Wednesday. But this year, it's to meet school time, state requirements, and now it's every other week.
Oh, every other?
Yeah.
And is that just upperclassmen?
Yeah, just, no, just high school. But seniors and juniors only have to go in for classes they need. Yeah.
Okay.
Jackson, can you talk, and Amal, can you talk a little bit about what Win Wednesday is?
Yeah, Win Wednesday. So, at our secondary, I'm not sure if middle school does it. That's, yeah, they don't do it. But at our high schools, we have a thing called Win Wednesday. It originated from COVID. So, it originally started to support students who needed help personally. So, if you had a, well, back then, it was if you had a C minus or higher, you could stay home, do home, or do homework remotely. And the students that had lower grades got to go to school and get the help they needed. Now, they've updated it. So, if you have a C or below, you have to come to school. And if you have a C plus or higher, you get to stay home. But you could also come to school if you wanted. So, and this program has just been a way to help students that really need that extra support. So, it's been helpful. But we've definitely leaned away from the every Win Wednesday. So, now it's every other.
Good explanation. Thanks.
All right. Great first report to the board.
I know it. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next, I will turn to board members to report on some of their recent activities and committee work, or where they have seen a passion inside of our district. And I will kick things off with Wendy Felton.
Oh, thank you.
Switching it up.
Yeah. Many of these things that I'm going to discuss right now already have been mentioned, but I will be participating and attending the majority of all these things. As it has been said, the Walkathon, which will be this Wednesday, being held at Capoja Elementary, starting at 4:30, I will be there assisting with them as I do serve on the Board of Directors of the foundation. And I want to put out a personal thank you to the Alechko's Meat Company for donating the hot dogs to be served to our participants at, at the, at the Walkathon. And also, on Tuesday at Croatian Hall, as was mentioned, it's the Taco Feed, which is a supporter for the Fill, Fill the Backpack campaign. And their tacos are already, are always really, really good. I haven't, I've had them many times at the Croatian Hall. So, this Tuesday, starting at 4:30, is really good to do. And then also, next week, is I am also a member of the Senior Center Board of Directors. Next Wednesday, October 2nd, at Central Square, is our Fall Annual Fashion Show, which starts at 11 o'clock. And if you're interested in attending, you do need to pre-register. There is a $20 fee that, that is charged to each person that attends, because that does help pay for our luncheon, which is, which is made by the coop, which will be bringing a delicious chicken dinner for us. So, if you'd like to, to attend, please contact Central Square to get signed up. And also, at Central Square tomorrow is the Fair for All Food Sale, where you have an opportunity to purchase meat products, vegetable products, and at, at a very reasonable price, it goes from 4 until 6 p.m., Central Square, the Fair for All, which I have attended in the past and have purchased good quality family food. And also upcoming, as was mentioned, the Homecoming Football Game, which will be on Friday, October 11th, which we are playing against Saint Anthony Village. Looking forward to attending that game. And also, the Homecoming Coronation will be held that Monday, October 7th, at the, the secondary high school in their auditorium at 7:30 in the evening. So, looking forward to homecoming. And one other thing that personally participates me with homecoming games, I am a graduate of South St. Paul High School, believe it or not. We are planning our 50th class reunion, which is being planned for next year, because I am a graduate of the class of 75. And if there are any, any members out there in the community that I graduated with, if you are interested in joining us with planning that meeting, we are having it on Thursday, October 3rd, contact me, because it is going to be attended at my, my apartment building. So, you would need to contact me in order to, to attend it. So, 50th class reunion for South St. Paul is really looking forward to us, as the class of 1974 just held their 50th class reunion within the last week or two they attended. So, that was, it's, it's a very active event, class reunions. Looking forward to that. And then, this Wednesday, the Farmer's Market here in South St. Paul, which is located on 12th and Southview, right behind the Waquota Credit Union. I will be attending there again. I'll be sitting with the Community Education Table there. So, I sit with Jean Zender and Linda Jacobs Buse. Will be attending there again. So, feel free to stop by. And there's some pamphlets you can, you can receive. Any questions regarding those programs, please stop by to, to see us at the Farmer's Market from 2 until 6. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim Human?
Ooh. Well, as far as committees go, Community Education in the tri district will start again on October 8th. So, I look forward to giving you updates about what's happening there. But as far as passion goes, just a lot of excitement from the kids about the beginning of the school year, even now that we're like fully a month in, still super excited to go to school. And... And specifically, I want to call out Brenda Johnson from Capoja has started up already her Ninja Warrior program and has called the kids from like 3rd through 5th grade who want to help her organize and plan the different camps and opportunities. That's already started, and I just think that's amazing work that she's putting in for that.
Excellent. Excellent. And Claflin?
Thank you. First up, we've had a group of community members meeting to discuss our facilities over the course of the summer, and we just had our last meeting with that group. And I'd like to thank everyone who participated in that. A recommendation will be coming from that group to the board. As someone attending those, I really appreciate all of the discussion that folks had. It's been really interesting to hear what the priorities are from our community members, parents, teachers, folks that direct activities, community members who are using our facilities, would like to use facilities in the future. Your participation really mattered. And similarly, we have such great collaboration and support from our community. All of these events that we've been discussing are in cooperation with others. And as part of the Local Issues Meeting, we discuss a lot of these same events, and folks are excited about coming to that football game at TCO. They're excited about supporting our schools and the Mayor's Youth Task Force through this Taco Feed. And with the State of the County Address being held at the Croatian Hall this year, that's October 10th, if you had a free spot in your calendar from all of these events, there's one more to fit in there. Local Issues really pulls together a lot of diverse groups that are supporting our community members. So, we'll be meeting on Wednesday morning at 8 o'clock at Central Square to discuss more upcoming opportunities to collaborate and work together. I'm sure On the Road Again will be a big topic for the community. You can come visit your school leadership at some of the booths there and find more Packer Pride gear.
Excellent. Excellent. Nikki Lollaberty?
Well, in the spirit of support and community, I would like to just chat for a minute here about today was the golf tournament for the Peacemaker Association, which they came and spoke to us as a board. And John, my, whatever he is. Kidding. Don't email me. No, John is, sits on the Board of Peacemaker, and so, he and the Board put this golf tournament together. And the reason I'm bringing it up is because the number of people from South St. Paul who come to this event and golf and donate money, generously donate money, the Croatian Hall was so generous, that it, it reminds me once again of the strengths of this community and that people really do come out and support when they need, when it's needed. And it's like former students, former Johns football players, guys he went to high school with, guys he went to college with, and then just other community members, South St. Paul, who want to support the program here in town. So, thank you to the people in this community who continue to give so generously to support our school community. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Monica Weber?
I'm just also, is, is excited for fall. Excited, you know, all the, you know, fall sports teams getting, getting underway. I sit on the, as a representative on the Association of Metropolitan School Districts, and they, they put out their voter guide last week. So, as we have elections coming up, obviously, our school districts are funded by those who sit in the seats of power at the state legislature. So, I'd encourage everyone to go and look up the information there. I've also had school board candidates and city council candidates knock on my door and ask me questions. That's been great. So, like, you also may have people who come out in, into the community, and I just encourage everyone to just reach out if you have questions or ideas, because we really do have a great small community here where you really can just have, you know, the mayor come knock on your door and ask you questions, and you're like, okay, I'll talk to you about what I think. And so, just take those opportunities for what they are, and we can move on.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I want to, again, extend a heartfelt welcome to Amal and Jackson. We, as a board, set a priority of bringing greater student voice to the board and wanting to know the pulse of the district, and very excited to serve with you on the board and your leadership inside the school. Also, want to extend a thank you to Lisa, who's putting a bunch of time into making that work and helping be a liaison to that process. But I think it's incredibly valuable that all of us sitting up on the board hear other perspectives as well, and want to thank our staff for kicking off a really phenomenal school year this year as well. With no further items on our agenda tonight, I am looking for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? With that, the motion carries. Meeting is adjourned tonight at 7:17. Thank you.